Good morning. It's October the 22nd. It's 9:00 a.m. I will call the order of the meeting of the Salina County Board of Commissioners. Where the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Bidrick-Sitton. Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner Hay.
Here. Please, if you're able to stand, join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move into the citizens' input portion of the meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Norm, would you like to address the commission?
Yes, sir. Norm in Salina. I thought this might be interesting for the commission. You've been discussing wages for your elected officials. And a current line magazine article suggests states that elected officials pay should be based on the price of wheat. You guys overpaid. I checked the price of wheat. It's $5.60 a bushel. So, one of you commissioners has refunded it, so you other four, you better pay it back.
Thanks, Norm. Any other citizens who would like to speak? Okay, at this time, we'll move into our consent agenda, which consists of the items of approval of taxroll adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of payroll, approve extension of ARPA grant agreement with the Salina Media Connection, and approval of public foreign agenda. Is there any items that any commissioner would like to remove or talk on? Move approval?
Second motion.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0. Okay, that will move us into E.
Broadband community assessment presentation by Andrew Kohill, who is the president and CEO of Design 9.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate the time this morning. As you know, we were engaged by the county back in the summer to perform a broadband feasibility study and assessment, and I'm just here to talk about our findings and results. My clicker is not clicking. Up there. So, there was a number of items we did. We did a market analysis of underserved and unserved areas. We talked to, had a fairly substantial number of meetings, both here and in Salina and out in some of the smaller towns in the county, met with some key stakeholders and groups. Part of our job was to recommend strategies to improve broadband affordability, reliability, and access, provide recommendations for digital equity, and to evaluate funding and financing options. I'm not going to try to go through this in any detail. We always get asked, well, there's not a lot of money for broadband, and this is just a little analysis we do. Over the next 30 years, the citizens and businesses and institutions of Salina County are probably going to spend $2.5 billion on broadband services. So, it's a lot of money, and a lot of it, in other parts of the country, it's really interesting, I'm going to talk more about this, but in other parts of the country, a lot of this money leaves typically leaves a county and often the state. Salina County is really blessed with having some good local and regional internet service providers who are doing a great job, and so a lot of that money is creating or supporting local jobs and is staying in the county. We did a residential and business broadband survey to ask people and businesses how they felt about broadband. We asked them what they're paying, what kind of upload and download speeds they had, how they use the internet, and some of their other things they were doing. Everybody wants faster internet. We've done about 50 or 60 of these studies over the last 10 or 12 years. Everybody wants faster internet, and the good news is, is generally getting faster over time. People are generally pretty satisfied with their internet here. A higher level of satisfaction, both in terms of the quality of their service provider and the reliability of their service. Not everybody's satisfied, but it's a higher percentage than we see in many other areas. 26% say the availability of good, high-speed broadband affects where they choose to live. So, internet is affecting other parts of a community, like zoning, business opportunities, work from home, and it's just something to keep in mind. 85% said the county should, does, should and has a role to play in facilitating better broadband. I want to emphasize the word facilitate. I have a slide later on, but I'll tell you now, we're not recommending the county become an internet service provider. It's, in fact, we've, in several hundred engagements we've done, we very rarely recommended that. It's really an unusual circumstance that looks like the local government ought to get involved in that business. But the county does have a role to play, just working with internet service providers, assisting with grant funding. There is federal and state grant funding available, so there are some roles that the county can participate in. Just a chart of where most of the responses came from. Most people live in and around Salina, it's no surprise, but we had a fairly good distribution of responses from farther out in the rural parts of the county. Work from home is a national trend. This really began to accelerate with the COVID crisis, and a lot of jobs have changed. 62% of the respondents are working from home part or full-time. Sometimes it's just one or two days a week, sometimes it's nights and weekends access, but it's, the broadband has become not just something that's nice to have to stream some Netflix movies, but it really contributes to the economy and people's satisfaction with where they live. Business survey results were very similar. Majority of businesses are satisfied with their internet service and providers. About the same percentage said, yes, the county should be helping make sure we have the right kind of internet. 40% of business respondents are home-based. So, it's something I've been saying for a long time, you only have to think about rural communities and neighborhoods as business districts, because that's where people are living and working now. And again, here's just a chart of, we had a few responses from out in the rural parts of the county. Many of them were clustered in and around the city. So, what did we find? As I said earlier, the county has some really good internet service providers, of a higher quality and, in our opinion, more committed to the local community than in many other places we study. It's really a tremendous advantage for the county. You have a lot of fiber internet here, even in some of the smaller towns. We were really, really surprised that some of the smaller communities have 100% fiber internet and gigabit speeds. It's a tremendous accomplishment, and the cost of it's 8% lower than the national average, and there's still a number of households and businesses that are using fixed-point wireless internet, and their cost is 6% lower than the national average. Nearly everybody has a computer, and most of those people also are using the internet, within 1% of the national average. So, in that respect, the county is very similar to the rest of the country. As I mentioned, there's a majority of households and businesses are generally pretty satisfied, and what we see is the fiber infrastructure and the ISPs and the pricing you have is a tremendous economic and community advantage, and particularly in terms of your being able to both retain and attract businesses and jobs. It really puts you ahead of many other areas of the country. So, just to sum up, I don't think the county needs to become an internet service provider. Joe does not want to get calls on Monday morning, "I couldn't watch the football game last night because my internet was out." And maybe there's some other county officials like Phil also don't want those calls. We think the county does have a role, as I said, work with the existing providers. Some of them may be interested in going after some state and federal funding for broadband, and it, a lot of those grant opportunities require a local government partner. It's not a heavy lift if they're prepared to assist with the application. And again, just tremendously impressed with Salina County. We've worked in 29 states, and you have great quality of life here, better than we see in many other places. You have some of the best fiber internet in the United States, and I don't say that lightly. Most communities don't have what you have here. And so, the quality of life and the great internet service is, creates a tremendous work-from-home environment for people, and there's, I see it as an opportunity to really market. Salina County is a great place to do business, a great place for younger families, businesses, and entrepreneurs to be here. You could live in some of the, either in the city here or in some of the beautiful small towns in the county, have wonderful quality of life for your children, and work from home, or start a business in some of these areas. So, it's really, can't say enough good things about Salina County, really. In terms of very specifics, the county GIS should be mapping all of the fiber that's distilled in public right away. While we were visiting here in the summer, we saw fiber being installed in county right away in a number of places, and it's really good to keep all track of all that and map all that. That's all I have to say. I'm happy to take questions. I know you have other things on your agenda, so I don't want to take too much time.
So, all of the fiber and stuff that the city's been, or they've been putting in the city, is that getting to the point where it's complete so that, you know, interconnection can be done?
Not so much in the city, but there is, there is some fiber in the city, and then again, there's a lot of fiber in the county as well.
So, they are installing fiber in Salina County that's going, that's out?
Yes, very much so. Yes.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to help.
Community change grant agreement with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, commissioners. So, today, what staff is asking for is that the chairman be authorized to sign a partnership agreement between the county and Salina Health Education Foundation, which most people know as Salina Family Healthcare, and that I be authorized to follow up. The purpose of this is to seek $20 million in federal funding that the Environmental Protection Agency has to offer to different communities. This really generated out of a conversation Commissioner Wees and Health Director Jason Tiller did a walkthrough of this Salina family facility, and that started into a conversation about additional opportunities to partner. They had been contacted, they're working, obviously, I think everyone knows, they're working to build a new building, and they have a fundraising person on board, and that person had said, hey, there's this federal grant opportunity. The federal grant opportunity requires a partner, either another community-based nonprofit or a local government or tribal organization. So, they approached us about the opportunity, and we've been working with them in preparation for possibly submitting this grant in November. It's, as I said, a $20 million request to the feds. The vast majority of that funding would go to Salina Family Healthcare to help them build their new facility, and in particular, to build it in a way that meets the requirements of the grant, which is around climate resiliency. So, they would build their new facility in such a manner as to be able to continue to provide services in the event of severe weather, et cetera. But, as part of the partnership agreement, just slightly over $1 million out of the $20 million would come to the county and do two things. One, we would do the pollution remediation portion of the grant. In this case, what is proposed is lead abatement for homes. Salina County experiences higher blood lead levels than many other communities, and our health department monitors that, but what they find is, often, they'll identify high blood lead levels, and then they'll work with the folks, the family affected, and find out either they're in a rental situation, or they're in a situation where they don't have the means to go in and abate the lead in their environment. So, this would provide an opportunity to actually fund some of those lead abatements, and even identify temporary housing for families when they would need to be out of their residence to do the abatement. And then, we would also, that would be about $800,000, and then, there'd be a little over $280,000 that would go to community engagement. One of the requirements of the grant is a significant effort at community engagement, and so, Salina Family Healthcare is like, well, the county does that. Could you, could you do that part of the grant? So, as I said, it's a little over $1 million that would be for those two activities for the county, and that would significantly fund two positions, two existing positions in the county for a period of about three years. One would be one of our environmental health sanitarians. We have traditionally had a four-county area that they do environmental work in. Ottawa County has decided to pull out of that agreement for 2025, so this would be an opportunity to have some replacement funding to make sure that that person still has a full slate of work on his plate. And then, it would also significantly fund maybe between 15% to 30% of the work for our public information officer to do that public engagement work. So, that is the grant in a nutshell, and I'd be happy to answer additional questions that the commission may have.
Okay, so, the, would that make, would that help the Salina family move a little bit faster to get their facility done, so maybe we can take a look at different options for our health department?
Yes, there is somewhat of an ulterior motive, I guess you would say, on the part of the county. In addition to doing wonderful work with lead, which is very needed in the community, if Salina Family is able to secure close to $19 million in additional funding, they would be able to break ground sooner on their new facility, and then their old facility might be available for us to look at for relocation of the health department in the future. So, yes.
Just a quick question here. Just a few years ago, and I think, I know that it's been since I've come on board, is that there was a arena, and I don't know whether it's Salina County Health, that determined that we do have a lead problem in Salina County or Salina, Kansas? And my question is, is whatever happened to that? I mean, did they, did they take care of a lot of the issues back then, or where did we go with that?
So, there was a lead grant program in the past. I believe that was through KDHE, through the state. The funding was somewhat limited, and one of the, one of the hurdles that they ran into was in dealing particularly with rentals. I believe that they really were sort of focused on owner-occupied homes, which, you know, does not necessarily fit all the time with the folks who need the help. And then, that funding has run out. So, we actually had to get both of the sanitarians recently recertified in lead, because that had sort of lapsed over time. But, the city of Salina is doing, they've just purchased a lead analyzer. They, you may have heard that they have a 16-block area that they've identified for some targeted investment, and they're including lead remediation as part of that. So, this would really work sort of hand in glove with that effort.
Okay. Another quick question here. Ottawa County, you said that this is to help replace Ottawa County pulling out. Do you know the dollars that were, how much that they paid in last year?
I'm going to defer to Hannah on that one.
$12,000. $12,000 was their annual amount.
So, is that the reason why they've pulled out, is because they just don't use us that often?
So, Ottawa County, my understanding is Ottawa County is experiencing some financial challenges. They had some budgetary issues, but in fact, they, they use us quite a bit, and we had proposed to them increasing that $12,000 for next year, and that was really, they said, okay, we've found a cheaper option. They're going to contract with somebody out of Smith or Phillips or someplace out west. And so, you know, Lincoln and Ellsworth are still in, and they're, you know, they've, they've agreed to some cost adjustments for next year, but Ottawa County just decided they wanted to do something different.
Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Any public comment? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to commission for action.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Mr. Chairman, I approve RFA 2024-152 as presented.
Second motion. I got a motion and a second to approve RFA 2024-152 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes 4-0. That moves us on to the next one.
2025 to 2027 visioning with Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning again. So, this one is a little bit of an odd one. The commission recently did a study session where you did facilitated discussion with, you know, what our future plans are. And so, this is really coming back with, you know, trying to nail down some direction to staff out of that. The facilitator report identified 15 one-year, or sorry, 16 one-year and 15 three-year goals or objectives that the commission had sort of ranked, and so, trying to sort of hang some meat on those bones, as it were. So, I wasn't sure... So I wasn't sure if we should agendize this as an RFA or a concept discussion because I would really like some feedback from the commission. But I did end up putting it on as an RFA just because I'd also like you to vote on it at the end of the day. But I thought what we could do is just sort of go through these and have the commission react and see if, you know, we're on, staff's on the right track or if you want some changes to each of these. So if that's acceptable, I'll just start through the list here.
Good money.
Yep. Did you have a question before I begin?
What was the question you just posed for?
If, if it's okay for me to start going through the list?
Oh, yes, please.
Okay. So first we'll do, look at the one-year priorities for 2025. And the number one priority that the commission identified was overall county building space assessment. And so staff's proposal is, you know, the downtown facility study will be presented to the commission by the end of this year. And so our work product for 2025 would be to present options to you for funding the first phase of whatever the study recommends.
And that's, that's a one-year, but the whole plan is 10 years probably?
Yes, so, or, I mean, I'm, I'm hoping the whole plan will be 20 years.
Twenty, and that's fine, it's past us. So our goal is just to kind of conceptualize everything and...
Well, and then you'll see that again, you also identified that as a three-year goal as well. So some of the one-year goals and the three-year goals are kind of married. And so, but in terms of a one-year priority, I've, in my head, the real, the priority for 2025 is, okay, how are we going to pay for this?
Right, and so will that be with the city commission that we're working on this? Or is it just our funding portion of it that will be going towards this?
So that's an excellent question. I had thought of it in terms of our funding. But obviously, it is a joint study and one of the possibilities, or maybe even it's a likelihood, is that some of the facilities would be joint-use facilities. And so, you know, there would be a need to have some communication. So I could certainly add that to this, that we would present options for funding the first study and work with the city on joint facilities.
And I think we're all on the same page, but I'd hate to have us, we're going this way and then the city's going this way on the fun, on funding or decisions and that doesn't make sense.
And I agree with that 100%, but another one of my concerns is that we're, we're being asked to fund something or look at how are we going to fund something when really we don't know what we're funding yet because we haven't looked at this study. And if the study says, okay, this first phase should cost you a million dollars or is it going to be 400 million dollars? So I, I would hate to sit back and, we're going to vote on something and, and sit back and say, I want to approve something, but I don't know what we're really approving yet. That's, that's a concern I have.
Yes, so a couple of things. One, it better not be 400 million because...
Then the votes now.
Well, yeah, yeah, I mean...
But so, yes, again, the, the plan is scheduled to be done in December. So you'll see it by the end of this year. What I'm asking you to do today though is, you know, you're not voting on whether you like the plan or not. You're just voting on if you accept the plan, then staff needs to come back to you with a funding plan next year.
Gotcha, thank you.
I think it's a priority, so, so do I.
Okay. So your second identified priority for 2025 was budget and more specifically ensuring that service can be properly funded without reductions and reconsider outside agency funding. And so I, I believe from prior conversations that that really looks like staff working with the city of Salina to schedule a joint meeting of the two commissions prior to the next budget process to discuss how we're doing outside agency funding. There might be more to it than that and I'm open to it if there are additional things you want me to capture, but I think that was sort of the first priority.
Well, I know we, we visited about that and talked about, you know, getting with the city and figuring out, you know, outside agency budgeting. My only concern was still that I would hate to see us completely give the reins of outside agents, or budgetings to outside agencies or give the money to outside, you know, we write a check to the city and says, here, you guys distribute it the way you feel, feel on this. I still feel that, you know, we need to keep a hand on some of this. I, I don't know if it's being greedy or what it is, but saying that, you know, I hate for people to get the perception that the county's not doing any funding of outside agencies at all and the city's doing it all. I mean, I still like to be able to take credit for helping funding outside agencies in some matter than just giving it away.
Yeah, and I, I'm totally in agreement with you. I've never been, let's just write a check to anybody else. And if that ever came out of my mouth, I apologize. No, that's, that's not it. I think the conversation needs to be, 85% of the time, it's the same taxpayer that we're giving. And it's the dog and pony show when they go to the city commission on Monday and then they come to us on Tuesday. I mean, how do, how can we change that a little bit, the dynamics of it? Instead of people coming and asking for homeless money on a Monday and then coming in, asking us for homeless money when basically it's the same taxpayer? That's all I want is some coordination with that. Big picture, I'm, as many years as I've done this, big picture is, I'm still, I'm starting, I should say, to not believe that it's our job to allocate donation dollars that people ought to be giving their own money to. I, I think we have, I think we have other problems, not problems, I think we have other concerns with staff and things like that that need to be funded before we start doing all these other things.
And I agree with that because I know we talked about that earlier too, is, you know, let's fund, you know, the county's needs and everything before we get into funding outside agencies and then see what we have left over. You know, we go in there, we start cutting other stuff just so we can fund the outside agencies and I, I really don't think that's a wise thing to do. But like I said, I like to see us take whatever the county's got, get the county taken care of and fund the county. And then whatever we have left over, then we take a look at whatever we need to fund outside.
Right, and, but the, yes, I agree because 10 years ago, when we started the budget, we started with outside agencies. That's the very first thing that we okayed and that just never made sense to me, you know, because then that really hamstrung the administrator in what, what we could do for the government. And, and so at least we've got that changed around. And so I agree with you that it needs to be the last thing. But I also think that a lot of these agencies pencil in what they're going to get from us in January before we've even gone through the budget. And then all of a sudden, it's, oh, we're cutting their, their budget. And I don't feel comfortable with that. So I, I, I believe that this is a high, high priority because I think the system is, is broken. I'm not saying what the answer needs to be, but, but I'm, I'm not comfortable with the status quo.
I think it's ranked where it needs to be.
Agreed.
Okay, then the third, the third priority that you had identified was infrastructure improvements, roads and bridges, et cetera, identify and plan. And so what I'd put down on that one is for the county engineer to present an updated multi-year work plan to the commission at the study session that you'll probably have in March of next year. Justin has typically done that each year. And so I think we'll continue that process unless there's some enhancement that the commission's looking for around that.
I think we've always, they've always done a good job with that, so it's just, let's keep going, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, I like the way we've done it in the past. The thing that concerns me is this year's budget, we, we cut improvements, the mill levy in half. And I don't know if that will generate the funds that are needed by the, the county to do some of the large-end projects that that mill levy was set up to do. So I'm hoping that that reduction was, was a temporary fix for the, for the budget of 2025. Sounds good.
Okay. Then your fourth, your fourth item was to identify optimal staffing levels. What is the right number of employees? And so I wasn't quite sure, I felt like this one didn't get a ton of discussion at the study session, so I wasn't quite sure where we wanted to go with this one. So what I invented for this one is to do a study and I think this could be done by staff, I don't think we're talking a consultant here, but to conduct a study to identify the average number of staff per residence in each of the departments here and then to sort of pick some comparison counties and see if we're in line and, and what the differences might be.
I just, I want to just say that it's like to identify optimal staffing levels. I, I think in the eight years I've been a commission, that I think the department heads have done an excellent job in coming to us pretty much each year and saying, I need to add this new employee or, hey, I think that our technology, we've made such advancements in what, how we do things and how we've accomplished things now, that that person that just left, we do not need to replace that person. So I mean, the study to me is done each year when the department heads turn in their budget for the next year, to me. But that's, I just wanted to say, I think our department heads do an excellent job of letting us know what their needs are for the next year and that the, they, their uses, usage of technology to help take care of the demands that's, that's caused by the, the public. Yep, so that's just my thoughts on the situation.
I actually don't remember this one. I was talking about, too much about this. I just feel like you guys are doing that every year anyway. By making it a goal, it makes us, it makes us seem like it's broken or something and we got to change things. And I just think, you know, Roger, I think your, your point is well-taken, we're already doing it.
Yes, I mean, and that's, that's where I'm, it's like to sit there and think that I want to do a study, to sit there and say, okay, here's the optimal level that we should be at because of other counties. And I'm going, I think our department heads are taking care of their, trying to anyway. I don't, I don't, whether some of them are or not, because I think that has more to do with the availability of hirees.
What do you think, Jim? Do you remember very much about this or?
I don't, I, I do remember that we, in my eight years here, I've only had one department head come in and say, hey, you can lessen my staff by one. I applaud that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd like to hear more of that. I think there's a balance there. We, we talked last week about the, the tag office and, and the, the long waits. There's a balance there, whether it be the registered deeds office or whatever office that you might have a wait for. Is it, would, would the taxpayer rather pay more to have a larger staff to convenience them in a five-minute wait instead of a 15-minute wait? Or should there be an accepted amount of time that you could expect to wait just for service?
So does that sound more like, rather than a survey of other counties, maybe it's more like a survey of the public for their tolerance or...
Commissioner Shadwick has touched many times, what, what is the, what is the public, what service are they expecting from us? And, and we'll, we'll provide that, but it's going to cost this amount of money. So it might be a balance of the two, I don't know. And it might be the old saying, think out of the box. Are there some practices that, that departments are doing that might be able to be adjusted or changed? You know, it just, I thought if Road and Bridge dropped one zone and had rotating, you know, absorbed one of their zones in, that you'd, you'd lose one greater operator in that area. Can, can they operate, maybe not grade the roads as often and, and spread that workload out? I don't know, it's, it's kind of a balance. You can ask other counties, what, what do you consider the correct workforce? You can ask the public, what service and at what expediency do you want that service? And then ask the departments, can, is there something that you could do, a practice you could do that will provide the service, but at a lesser cost to the public?
You know, I think a prime example is our appraiser's office, you know, when he came in and said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna drop one, you know, we're not going to fill that one position that was open. I mean, you know, I think the department heads that we've got is letting them take on the initiative of taking a look at their departments and say, hey, is there something that I can do or change to where we can, you know, it doesn't say they have to let somebody go, but is there something that they can change on that staffing to make it more efficient?
So I think what I'm hearing is rather than this study idea, we could just say, sort of, what I would say, issue a challenge to department heads to think creatively about staffing next year.
Yeah. You know, we do that, we do that every year at budget time anyway. We challenge the department heads to figure out some way they can cut, you know, the, you know, whatever they can cut for the budget to make it, to be operable and be able to, them to use it. So I think that's, you know, it goes with the same way.
Does the KAC conference ever have seminars about how technology is changing staffing at all?
Yeah, I know they did a AI session last year, I think they're...
Maybe something in December.
Something, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so we'll change that one up a little bit. Sounds like it's still something that the commission values, but we want to not do a study. We just want to say, department heads, this is a new thing. Okay, so the fifth one that the commission identified was expo center improvements needed and increased usage. So I just noted that next year will be the final year of the five-year plan for the city required improvements per the lease. And so then the plan would be to present a new plan for an additional five years' worth of improvements. And then the commission can discuss whether you want to fund those or at what level.
So the, the five-year plan that we're in the fourth year of or whatever, does the city at some point check that off their box and say, we have passed?
Yes, so we've actually been meeting with them annually. And they say, where are you on this, where are you on this, where are you on this? And so they've already checked off a number of things that we've completed. So yes, they, they're doing that.
So they've driven the bus for this session. What we're going to look at maybe is the next five years, which maybe are our priorities.
Correct.
Bathrooms or whatever needs to be done, okay?
That's, this is a hard one for me because, you know, over at the expo center the other day and looking around and got a chance to walk outside and take a look at everything, you know, like I said, we've got an improved, a lot of improvements that's been done. I, I don't know what the rest of the commission feels, but I just feel that the expo center is starting to slip out of our hands. I mean, the usage, the money that we are putting into the expo center, you know, I've, you know, I had a couple of discussions, I mean, you know, Salina is not an agricultural city. I mean, or agricultural place that I feel...
Celine County is.
So Celine County is, but, but if we look, if we look, my concerns is the bathrooms over there. We're going to have to do something with those and I mean, that is not going to be a little, a little bill. There's a lot of other improvements over there. I think it's going to be, you know, within the, like you said, within the next five... I think it's going to be, you know, within the, like you said, within the next five years, looking at what's going to have to be done. I think David has done a, an excellent job of trying to get bookings done over there and get it over there. But I'm just worried, you know, is it enough to what we're doing?
Well, I believe we made a commitment to the, to the city that we were invested in that. And I don't know what it hurts to set up a vision after this, after the city's portion is done about what needs to happen over there. We haven't, we're not spending any money. We're just addressing where, where it is at and what is needed. And if we're going to be in the business, which we are, I want to be a good businessman about it.
I agree with that a hundred percent because it's, it's another of those issues. I feel kind of a little different than Chairman Haye is that I, I feel that Salina is very much an agricultural community. I mean, if we take Great Plains, Kubota, everybody else that's here, Vortex, there's a lot of companies here that are very much agriculture orientated. The community itself is built around the, the trade building and the, the grain industry back from the old days. That money is still around being utilized here in Salina, whether we know it or not. So for that there, I look at the Expo Center still, whether we have a fair to have this or that, I still feel that the Celine County needs to supply an arena for the 4H and the arena for them to play in because it's, it's our, for them kids to be able to go play in that 4H, whether it's making jellies or raising it an animal. It's something else besides playing on a electronic device. So I, I just feel that it's very important for us to get this as, keep it going strong. So that's, but I'm from a small agricultural community. So that's, that's still me in this arena.
It's why it's on our list.
Yes. Yep.
And I believe that there's, there's possibility of some partnering. I think we can look out to the private and maybe do some branding with our buildings and, and providing a structure that, that someone can put their name on and have it as a top-notch facility.
That's a great idea.
So then there were a number of things, including items six and seven, but also a couple lower ranked ones that all seemed to be staff salary related. So I kind of grouped them together a little bit. So number six was attracting the best new employees. And number seven was staff wages, study and options as well as bonuses. And then number nine was employee retention. And number 13 was employee health benefits. So, you know, I feel like we have done things on each of those over the last three to four years. Our vacancy rate is down substantially from where it was, you know, during the pandemic and immediately post COVID. So, you know, Marilyn and I had a conversation about this and I'm not sure, not sure we have a lot more ideas to, to bring to the table on these things. So maybe a second set of eyes or a new set of eyes would be the best way to, to tackle this. And so I thought, well, what we could do for next year, I mean, there's short-term plan, long-term plan, but for next year, since we don't have anything specifically budgeted, maybe try and capture some savings when there's turnover, vacancy savings, and then try and use that money rather than having it just, you know, wash back into the general fund and, and, you know, transferred to capital or whatever. That we would try and do maybe a series of small studies, just targeted at specific things that would come up during the year. So maybe we do a study specifically on health insurance options or we do a study specifically on retention or something. But that those would be pretty small in scope and, and just use available vacancy savings. That was, that was as creative as I could get on that one. So.
You know, we, we did what, a wage study, what, two years ago, three years ago? How often should a wage study be done to keep up with the demanding wages around?
So I think we have historically said every three years we would look at doing a wage study. What I've heard though, both from commissioners and from some of our employees, and this sort of bleeds into sort of your three-year, you know, three-year goals. But I think folks are, you know, certainly everybody wants to be paid more, right? Whatever the number is, people would like a higher number. But people are also sort of dissatisfied with the way the system is set up. So that's a little different than just, hey, let's go out and, you know, compare to a bunch of other clerks and see what the clerk's number should be. It's, okay, let's rethink how we're paying. And, and I think that is a bigger undertaking than what I was envisioning here for 25. I think that's really something we need to, if we want to do something that grandiose, we should, 25 would be the year we budgeted and 26 would be the year that we do it. And 27 would be the year that we implement it.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Okay. So the next one, number eight, you had said increased communication between elected officials and staff. And so I just note that our PIO already had plans to have commissioners and department heads writing articles for the employee newsletter next year. So I think that's a way to try and get that done. But if there are other ideas that you all had?
Wow, I'd never thought of that. That's good. Whoever came up with that, that's good.
We have good staff. Then number 10 was tag office, space, staffing, organizational assessment. So as you all know, you've met with Treasurer Jim DeBois and we're, we've been working on publicity. So the proposal for 25 would be to write letters of support for legislation, continue to monitor lines and repeat messaging. And then Jim and I were brainstorming the other day and said, okay, the reason the door to the tag office is where it is is because once upon a time, there was an exit out the north side of the building. But that exit doesn't exist anymore. And could we go to the building authority and talk about changing the way the doors are set up so that it might actually make a little more sense? Have, you know, like one line for waiting in line, one line for appointments, one line that was just the exit, you know, sort of reconfigure it a little bit. That might be an opportunity as well. So pursue that for next year. Yes, no, more, less?
The other, the other day I went in and renewed and I wanted to do it in person just to, just to witness it, just to go through the process. The line was backed up three or four deep on the bench. When I got in line, the problem is I can see with, with doors, there's a renewal and then there's a, a new, new tag registration going on. And they'll come out and ask, are you a renewaler? I, who's next for a new tag and kind of pluck out of the line. But with all that said, by the time I got in line, by the time I left, it was 30 minutes. And that was a long line. So there's a perception that it's a terrible, terrible backup. But if you go into knowing that you've got a 30-minute wait to get your tag, it's not as, it isn't, it is, doesn't overwhelm you.
Right. And if it does overwhelm you, do you put into your mind, next year I'm doing this online?
Exactly. Or, or mailing it in or?
Or mailing it in.
I think it's an education. I really do. I think it's just an education.
Yep.
And I just, when you said that, and I'm just sitting here thinking of the way the doors are now. I mean, I, I think that that would be pretty easily fixed with just coming out between those two doors with a partition and bring it out of line and two stands out there saying, hey, this line's for this and this line's for that. And here's the two areas that you go down. And so, I mean.
We talked about a kiosk last week and we kind of poo-pooed it. But I, I've seen it afterwards thinking, that's not a bad, you know, if you're sitting there going, that's a half an hour? I can do it on, on this kiosk?
Yeah. I don't know. Because like I said, you know, if you put a kiosk out there with a computer or people can stand out there, well, you know, it might be easier. I don't know.
I mean, we could also, I, I just, this just occurred to me. I haven't discussed it with Jim. He might hate this idea, but I, like, you know, like you go to Carlos O'Kelly's, they give you the little pager and like, maybe, maybe we do something like that. I don't know how much those.
You can go do some other work.
Systems are, but you know, go wait in your car till the thing goes off. And I mean, you know, there are other options when there are lines and.
Yeah. Yeah. Just a bigger office doesn't make sense to me, but.
Right. And certainly not funded for next year. So that, so the plan for next year is, you know, to try and tackle some of these operational things. So the next one then was improve the county work environment, renovated spaces, team building. So obviously we're doing the facilities, right? We've got that. But then, you know, couple things, three things here. Continue to use the employee management partnership to gather ideas for improvement. Do periodic surveys, which we've been doing. We just completed one, try and do another one. And then, you know, make sure that we're tapping into the employee engagement team to do employee appreciation things. There was a suggestion out of the survey that maybe we should do like a employee picnic and so, so, you know, try and make sure we're using our employee volunteers to actualize some of those things.
You know, I don't know if this works in that same area, but I've been really impressed here lately of the different departments using shared services and using, if, you know, if you've got an employee that's, that's at free for a little while, that they could go over to a different department and help at that department. If it's with mailings, if it was with, you know, reconcili, you know, reconciling something. So I was really impressed with the way that, you know, we are using some of that. And I kind of like to see more of that. I'm sure that we got departments that the people are not, I shouldn't say they're not busy, but not busy all the time, that they could, you know, free up some time to help, you know, other departments that are in need.
And then number 12 was childcare. So identify what role the county plays and who should take the lead. So we talked earlier about having a conversation with the city regarding outside agency funding. And so I said, the subject to that, we could work with United Way to identify a reasonable request that could be funded in the 26 budget. I think, I, I think my perception is the problem this year was not that the commission didn't want to do something for childcare. It was that the ask was monumental. And so maybe just sort of work with them a little bit to try and ask for something a little more doable. And then number 14 was housing. And I need some assistance on this one because this was on our priority list previously. And Commissioner Shadwick and I had that meeting with a number of stakeholders and brought it back to the commission. And then you all said, okay, we, we feel like we don't, we're good with housing. We don't want to do any of that. So, and then it reappeared on the list again. And so what do you want me to do?
I'm surprised it showed up again. I, maybe it's a comment I might have made, but in, in my mind, the county, we looked at it and, and our role in this, why duplicate something that the city's doing? They're working with private, or private individuals to, to address a housing need. There isn't a housing need in the county that I'm aware of. There isn't a, a big push that we don't have enough houses out in the rural area to, to move into this or that. And I, and you and Commissioner Shadwick met with the other incorporated and unincorporated areas to, to see what their needs are, what our role might be. I just don't believe we, we need this on our list of our one year to do.
Yeah, I think, I agree. I think last year when we were talking about it, we all know that it's a, it's a need maybe nationwide, but it's, I don't, I don't see it high on our priority or even on our priority at all. And I'd take it off your plate.
And I feel, I mean, I feel the same way as I get.
Okay, scratching this one?
Yep. What I would do.
Okay. So then number 15 was identify responsibilities of each department and workload, which was somewhat similar to identify optimal staffing levels, but a little bit of a different take on it. And so I thought maybe as part of the budget preparation process next year, a way to, to start on this, because I, I think where this was going was around, could we maybe outsource some things? I think that was kind of where this was going. And so I said, well, maybe as part of a way to, to start to tackle this, as part of the budget process next year, we would have departments identify if there are competing entities that provide some of the services that they do and just, you know, kind of start gathering a list.
I can't see this as being a high priority. I mean, we're already on 15.
Yeah. It's like every department has a little bit of this. I mean, because, you know, it's like we could even go as large as the Roden Bridge Department is and you go, okay, yeah, you're competing with other dirt movers out there, but those people couldn't begin to handle the infrastructure that we have to take care of on a daily basis or in the winter months or snow or flood, whatever. So it's, it's like that. But one of the other things is me, I've always kind of looked at it going, okay. On the health department, you look at it, okay, we have, there, in town, there is for breastfeeding or for babies premature or whatever. And for home healthcare, we have all those other entities out there already providing the service. But what is the county's role in this amongst those players? And that's the thing that is like drives me to decide, okay, where do we go with this?
Well, we've discussed the home health thing before and, and I think I was the one that brought it up. It just didn't, it, it's not going anywhere.
Yep.
It's too ingrained.
Yep. But.
It's down the list for a reason.
So if we don't get to this one, you won't, uh, won't put it on my evaluation next year. Great.
No, we didn't say that.
And then the last one was improve working relationships with depart, or between departments. And so the way the facilitator talked about this, it seemed kind of like it was a. and so, the way the facilitator talked about this, it seemed kind of like it was a, maybe a bonding thing, so I just noted that we've already got planned to do some training exercises for the department heads next year in addition to our regular meetings, so we're going to do a few more.
I mean, I was going to ask, is it a problem? I mean, do we have a problem with the relationships between the departments? I mean, I really have not heard anything from staff or anything that I, I guess, you know, we do our team building stuff and do different things, you know, like the county in-service and, and stuff like that, but I mean, is there a problem, is there a problem there?
Yeah, who, who decided that this list needed to be 16 items long? I mean, because it was mentioned in, on one tacky note that went up on a board, it made the list here, I'd, would be better to cut this list down to the top 12 or whatever and, and get more time spent on the more important things than to have this giant list that's just taking up time.
Those are all important.
I like it.
No, they're all important things and I think one of the things that I was, was with is, when I started ranking them, I think I stopped at five, five or six, I didn't even keep going because I was just like, well, they're all really important, but should they be a goal? I mean, that ought to be something we're working on every day, is to make sure everybody's happy and wants to get along and stuff like that, I don't think it's a goal of the time.
But to go back to Chairman Hayes, have we identified a problem with working relationships which make us want to address that? Was there a problem that put this on the list, so we need to improve it?
So, I mean, this, this came out of the process, the facilitated process, so at some point in time, somebody must have mentioned this in their interviews with Ty and then he put it on a list and you all ranked it, but.
And this list wasn't just compiled by us, he also visited with staff and elected officials, so some of these items came from that direction.
Yeah, so it came from somewhere, but I will say in response to the question, I, I've never had a department head come to me and say, oh gosh, I think our relationships are awful, we need to do something about that, I think.
We're good. Shorten the list.
Yeah, I agree with Jim, I mean.
Okay, deleting this one, got it.
Not saying it's not important, but it's just.
No, no, but, I mean, but we are already planning on doing some more stuff together next year and, okay. Okay, so those were the one years, so then for the three-year goals, I tried to do, here's what we'll do in '25, here's what we'll do in '26, here's what we'll do in '27. So the first one again is upgrade facilities and like we talked about, '25 would be development of a funding plan, '26 would be selection of architects and development of construction plans and '27 will be construction and moving. You know, depends on what they recommend, we think it's going to be a health department, but you know, whatever that first phase is, that would sort of be the sequencing of it. The second item was pay scale, again, this, I thought of that as the bigger piece, so '25 would be include the funding, '26 would be select firm and conduct the study and then '27 would be to implement whatever they recommend, you agree? And then, number three was old jail renovator demolish, so '25 would be, if we're going to demolish it, if that, if the recommendation is to demolish it and that's what you all agree to, then contract for demolition, or if the recommendation is to renovate it, then '25 would be identify the funding, '26 would be make the plans, '27 would be construct something. And then, there were two of them, again, four was long-term planning for capital improvements, roads, equipment, et cetera, and 11 was capital equipment planning, long-term planning for equipment replacement and funding and those seemed like the exact same words in a different arrangement, so I merged them together. And so, what I was thinking on this one was for '25, so we've had the CIP and we've had the road plan, we have the EIP, but we really, the way we've always done EIP was one year at a time and so I thought, well, what we could do for '25 is work on doing a multi-year EIP, so you can see vehicle needs and other replacement equipment needs over a longer period, like you know how many vehicles the sheriff is going to need, not just next year, but the next three to five years. So, compile that in '25 and then in '26, sort of merge those documents, so you would have the CIP, the engineer's plan and the EIP kind of all in one place and you could look at it comprehensively, see how that works and then in '27, make any tweaks to it. Number five was employee recruitment and retention, so again, that has kind of let, I mean, it was a huge problem two years ago, now it's less of a, you know, we're down to single digits kind of thing, but I said, okay, so examine turnover rate trends next year, if it's a problem, develop plans in '26 and continue any implementation in '27. And then, six and seven again were very similar, so review purpose effectiveness and results of county programs and then long-term planning for county services, offering the right services versus outsourcing. So, in my one-year plan, I said, we'll have departments identify competitors, so in my three-year here, I was thinking, well, in '25, you could do a study session to review the folks that departments have identified as competitors and then in '26, determine whether to, whether you wanted to outsource some things and then what kind of performance targets you would want to establish there and then in '27, you would actually, you know, outsource things if that's where you wanted to go. Eight and nine, again, somewhat similar, eight being budget and nine being staff assessment, duties, workload, et cetera. So, this one, I guess we need to refine a little bit because I had kind of tied this back to that study, what we talked about and then you said, no, don't do the study, just challenge department heads to, to identify optimal staffing levels, so, so I feel like I need to rework this one a little bit, but what I had said was, '25 would be identify the appropriate comparison organizations, do the survey, '26 would be work to incorporate changes into the budget and '27 would be final implementation, but.
Going back, what if, what if we stop at five?
One thing I do see, then I think, that's the next one that's on the list, I really do think that we need to take a closer look at some type of a grant writer, if we look at all of the grants out there that a lot of our department heads and people are writing and getting the money for, if we had somebody in that position get, could help write these grants, get these grants submitted, I think that we would see a really big increase on getting monies into the county for different programs and stuff and it would really, it would really help our budget a lot to have somebody in there that could do this, that type of work. I'm not saying it's the ones that we have in there, we've got a lot of department heads that are doing, doing grant writing and does an excellent job, but if we had somebody in that position that could do that, I just think it'd, it'd pay off big dividends.
I, I agree that there's some departments that could profit with a, with a good grant writer, I don't know if it needs to be an employee that's doing that, I think you could identify a need and contract that out and not have a full-time person who's just waiting around to write up a grant, but.
Yeah, I think that that was, that was part of our conversation during the study session, I think, and I think we all kind of agreed of that, why is that not on our one-year list then?
Yeah, that's what I was just asking.
What do you think, Jim?
I, I think there's an immediate need.
Yeah, can we switch that, can we switch that to the one-year and then going forward, I think we're in agreement that it's not necessarily an employee.
True.
It's just if the expo center feels that the, you know, that would be something that comes to us and we'd contract.
If the need's there and it's going to cost us $200,000 to get, to contract out a grant writer, well, maybe it would be an employee then, but we'd have to weigh that to see and, and kind of wade into this and contract out a few to see the pluses.
I'm, I'm.
Joe, move it up a year.
Yeah, move it up, you know, I also, in talking to Bruce last night, he wasn't really sure, but he thought there was going to be something at KAC this year, a program put on about grant writing, so, I mean, that's something that I think of a lot of our department heads, whoever shows up at KAC this year should take a look at that and, and, you know, go through the class and see exactly what it entails to write a grant, but yeah, I agree moving that up.
Okay, so, that conversation started with Commissioner Shadwick wanting to lessen the three-year list and so we ended up moving grant writer up to the one-year list, great, so I'm, I'll just, are there any of these other things, budget and staff assessment, prioritize community services and create priorities for each department, expo center, which we've already talked about on the one-year list, and then commission to hold study sessions to review packets, which we've already talked about in terms of our schedule, are there any of those things that need to stay on this three-year list?
Not for me.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, so we will delete all of those.
Hit the easy button.
So, I think, thank you all for indulging me in, in taking time to go through that, I think probably the appropriate thing then would be to ask you all for a motion to sort of direct me to go back and refine this and then bring it, and I'm thinking I just put it on consent calendar for next week and unless you decide to pull it off consent.
So moved.
So we have a motion in second, that would be to approve the RFA then?
Uh huh.
Or?
Direct staff to bring it back.
Okay.
Yeah.
We have a motion in a second to direct staff to bring it back to the commission on the recommendations for the, what is it called, the?
Visioning?
Visioning. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side and that passes 4-0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Informational items, number one is third quarter budget update with Phillip Smith-Haines, county administrator.
So I'll make this much shorter than the last item, so things are generally going well, especially on the revenue side, particularly sales tax and interest have been good, on the expenditure side, things are up a little bit, but it's generally a tale of good news, the reason they are up is because we have more staff that are actually being paid and so that gets us closer to what we projected and then on the fire departments, they're purchasing equipment, so I don't see any cause for concern.
Okay.
Commissioner comments?
Phillip, I just got one thing, I wanted to find out and I know you probably said something about this last month, we got the schedule coming up here next month or month, or December?
We've traditionally done it in December, but there's no reason we couldn't do it in November.
I would like to have, if possible, some more discussion on that to where that we're all here at the same time, I know that we kind of looked at a, you know, a probable schedule, but I would really like to be able to discuss it with, you know, with the commissioners here and try to get some type of a consensus and even if we need, if we can go ahead and make a decision of some type of what that schedule is going to look like next year, so we can plan ahead and plan that through, if that's okay with the rest of the commission.
So, I, just a clarification question then, are you thinking that looks like a, another concept discussion or should I bring back a draft resolution and have you just modify a resolution?
What is the, what resolution are we looking at right now?
So my understanding from the way that you all had sort of left the conversation last time was the resolution that I would bring back would be for three meetings a month, but with an extra half hour on the first Tuesday of each month to do a work session in advance of the meeting in 107B.
So one meeting a month will be canceled?
There will be either canceled or study session, yeah, depending on the way it falls.
And I was the one that wasn't here and I went through your notes and I went through that thing and I just made some, assuming I'm a chair next year, I just made some changes of places, times I wasn't going to be here, so maybe flipped or something like that, but I was very comfortable with what you guys talked about.
Okay.
So maybe if I just bring back the resolution and then you all can, if you want to have discuss, obviously you can have discussion on a resolution and if you hate it, you can change it.
I think we're all on the same page, I think once it starts getting into next year, if there's times where it needs to be changed, it can always be changed.
And that's kind of what I was, I wanted to make sure we had a consensus of all of this, that, you know, this would be, you know, what we're looking at and what we can do, so, yeah, that's fine.
I just don't want to waste, I mean, there are some meetings I feel like we're wasting staff's time by meeting at nine o'clock for two, two items and so, you know, that kind of interrupts their day, their flow of their day getting in there, so I think, I think we're all right.
Okay.
Sounds good.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
Announcements.
Well, I'll mention that early voting has started and so, if you thought the tag office lines were long, you should come on down and vote, no, we have had wonderful turnout so far, it looks like people are very engaged, which is certainly what we want with an election, so again, eight to five here at the city-county building and you can come on in and regardless of where you live, of course, on November 5th, you'll have to go to your polling place.
I'll just piggyback off of that, I'm sure the clerk would appreciate, just adding on to that announcement, October 29th is the last day to apply for an advanced ballot by mail and November 2nd, they have Saturday advanced voting here in this building from nine o'clock in the morning until four o'clock.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I'm a majority adjourned?
Second to motion.
Got a motion, second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same side, that passes 4-0, we will see you guys next week.